Welcome to this evening's regular scheduled business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Dr. Lawanda Falami of Greater Bethlehem Church in Atlanta, Georgia. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please stand with me.
Good evening. Let us pray. Our Father, our Father, Father Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. Once again, it's a few of your believers petitioning you for your presence in this room this evening. We come asking you for your mercy and please show your grace. We ask you to guide these commissioners name by name. Walk with each of these neighbors. We all stand in need for one thing over another. Mine's not like theirs and theirs are not like mine's. But I know you are God that supply all our needs. Now, Father, we ask that you bless these bereavement that's going through our land where death is on every corner. We ask you to let us know to harm thyself, to seek you, and then you will come and hear your name. And we're going to be so careful to give you all the praise and all the glory in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 19th, 2023 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
All right, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, number 12, Resolution 2023-192. If we could pull that for the regular agenda, the deannexation.
Clear on that one, Madam Clerk.
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And number 21.
Any others?
Hold on, hold on, just give me a second. Number 21. No, that's not, that's not what's in my, hold on, let me pull my.
Well, while she's looking for it, I might ask for the item number 11, 2024 Benefits Renewals be placed on the regular agenda as well.
Mr. Chairman, I also have one, item number 19, 2023-209. The ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County for the License Review Board. I'd like that one pulled to the regular agenda as well.
Can you repeat that question?
That was item 19.
19?
19, mhm.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Oh, yes. The 21, number 21, 2023-215 regarding the charitable organizations.
Yeah, you already pulled that one.
Oh, I did? Okay. Okay, I thought it was 192. Do we have 192?
Or you got 215?
The deannexation?
Yeah, you said that one too.
Okay, okay. All right, I wasn't sure if 21, it was showing something else on here. So yes, 21, please.
Are there any others?
Okay.
Before discussion, can we pull item 23 as well to the regular agenda? Madam Clerk, you're clear on item 23?
I'm clear.
Any others? All right, here and then, I'll, at this time, ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Suck in the motion. Any questions on any of the items?
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
She has a question.
We add the proclamation, the proclamation?
Yes, thank you for that. There's been a request to add a proclamation for ovarian cancer. Is there a motion to add that proclamation to the agenda?
I move that we add the proclamation to the agenda in regards to ovarian cancer.
Is there a suck?
Second.
Sucking by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Now, I'll entertain the motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Who, is there a suck?
Second.
Sucking by Commissioner Davis. Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Our first item is our proclamation. Clayton County recognizes September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month.
In honor of the late Sanaa Singleton Gregory, former District One Commissioner, Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, September 2023. Whereas ovarian cancer is a disease characterized by the growth of abnormal malignant cells in the ovaries, fallopian tubes, or the peritoneum. And whereas ovarian cancer ranks fifth in cancer-related deaths among women in the United States and can affect any woman regardless of age, race, or economic background. Each year, an estimated 22,000 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer and approximately 15,000 cases are fatal. And whereas despite remarkable scientific breakthroughs, no reliable method for asymptomatic screening and detection exists, often delaying discovery until the cancer has progressed to far deadlier advanced stages. As a result, only around 20% of ovarian cancers are found at an early stage. And whereas symptoms of ovarian cancer may include pelvic or abdominal swelling, or pain, difficulty eating, or feeling full quickly, sudden weight loss, or urinary symptoms such as an urgency or frequency, among others. When caused by ovarian cancer, such symptoms tend to be persistent and abnormal. And whereas late-stage ovarian cancer is difficult to treat, women diagnosed with ovarian cancer have an average survival rate of five years, with only 47% of patients having a full recovery. If diagnosed and treated before the disease has spread beyond the ovaries, the five-year relative survival rate is 92%. And whereas many organizations across Georgia, such as Georgia Ovarian Cancer Alliance, are dedicated to increasing awareness of ovarian cancer in an effort to establish more effective resources for early detection. Advanced treatment options improve the quality of life for those affected by the disease. During National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we stand in solidarity with the brave women fighting this terrible disease. We honor the mothers, sisters, daughters, wives, and friends we have tragically lost. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Alika Anderson, Commissioner of District One, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge and recognize September as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. We encourage all citizens, government agencies, organizations, healthcare providers, and research institutions to join in awareness, knowledge, and action. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the sale of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 19th day of September in the year 2023.
I just want to say to everyone, thank you all for coming out tonight. And tonight, we have our special guest, which is Mr. Willie Gregory. He is the late husband of our late Commissioner, great Commissioner, Sanaa Singleton Gregory, who we know passed due to ovarian cancer. So we dedicate this proclamation to her tonight. We dedicate this month to her tonight. And again, thank you for coming out, and we love you, Mr. Gregory.
Next on our agenda is a presentation, county supplement for Chief Magistrate Judge. This is presented by Judge Keisha Wright Hill.
Good evening. I am Chief Magistrate Judge Keisha Wright Hill, and standing with me this evening is my presiding judge and second-in-command Judge Latrivia Kate Johnson. Our additional full-time associate judges, Judge John Parker cannot be here, he's out of town, and Judge Charity Bridgewater is still on the bench handling disposessory cases. As judges, every day, we disperse justice and equity to the citizens of Clayton County. Equality is at the forefront of everything that we say and do. Unfortunately, as magistrate court judges, we are the ones that have been treated unfairly. This evening, we are requesting that the board implement equality across the board and tie the magistrate court judges' salaries to the salaries of the Superior Court judges by resolution. Currently, there is a huge disparity in salaries between the different classes of court. magistrate court judges are the lowest-paid judges both outside and inside of Clayton County. Clayton County magistrate court is the fourth busiest magistrate court in the state, and that ranking is based on the number of cases that we handle. We currently handle over 61,000 cases per year. The Big Five denotes the five largest metro Atlanta counties and includes Clayton, Fulton, Gwinnett, Cobb, and DeKalb. As you can see in the materials that I've already presented to you, when you compare the salaries of magistrate court judges in the Big Five, our Clayton County magistrate court judges' salaries are lower than the salaries of magistrate court judges in every other county. The chief magistrate judge's salary is $39,000 less than the salary of all the other chief judges. The magistrate court associate judge's salary is $63,000 less than the salaries of the other associate judges in the county. In Clayton County, there are five classes of court. Probate and juvenile are specialty courts, and then you have magistrate court, state court, and superior court. In 2017, six years ago, the probate court judge's salary was connected to superior court by legislation. In 1996, 27 years ago, both the state court judges and the juvenile court judges' salaries were connected to superior court by a resolution approved by the Board of Commissioners. The juvenile court judges' salaries are still calculated today from that same 1996 resolution. The magistrate court judges' salaries, however, are currently calculated based off of population and numbers derived from a census that is only updated every 10 years. Keep in mind, this type of calculation was geared towards small rural counties, not large metro counties, which is why no other class of court in Clayton County uses this calculation. It's also the reason no other large metro county uses this calculation. Currently, the magistrate court handles nine different types of hearings, which is more hearings than any other court. That's first appearance, bond hearings, disposessory or eviction hearings, pre-issuance hearings, civil motions, civil trials, child abandonment hearings, and county ordinance. Additionally, both the chief judge and presiding judge have numerous administrative duties in addition to their caseload. I've included in the materials as well the duties of the chief magistrate judge, as well as the presiding judge, and the current duties of the magistrate court overall. It is ironic that magistrate court has never been connected to superior court, yet magistrate court is the court that assists superior court in handling their TPO cases and hearing felony bond hearings every week. No other court can say that. Unlike any other court, magistrate court judges work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, on weekends, on holidays, and all during the pandemic. We issue all of the search and arrest warrants for every law enforcement agency in Clayton County. We never close. While state court hears only misdemeanors and superior court hears only felonies, every single person that is arrested in Clayton County, including the Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, comes through magistrate court. Let me be clear, I mean no disrespect to my colleagues in all of the other courts, but there is no comparison to the volume of work that magistrate court handles every day. In the last 30 days, I have lost not one, but two judges. But they didn't leave Clayton County. One went to work in the county attorney's office and the other in juvenile court. Additionally, my previous presiding judge left magistrate court in January and went to state court. All three judges citing their reason for leaving magistrate court was due to an overwhelming amount of work coupled with a low salary. As I tried to replace those judges, I've spoken to three excellent candidates, all of which declined the offer, all three stating the salary was too low. The judges that I have now are excellent judges that show compassion while delivering justice. But they are overworked, underpaid, and now with the most recent loss of judges, they're even more overwhelmed. The current magistrate court judge's salary are the minimum salaries that our judges can receive. In your materials, I provided the magistrate section of the 2023 ACCG Salary Guide. The Salary Guide, which explains how county salaries are calculated, only reflects the statewide minimum salary law and does not factor in the volume of cases or the increase in caseload. The Salary Guide also states, and I quote, "In general, a magistrate is paid either according to the procedure set forth above, which is the statewide minimum, or according to local legislation." Based on this provision, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to approve a resolution addressing our request. We ask today that you use your authority to eliminate the huge disparity in the salaries of Clayton County judges. I conclude with this. My judges work tirelessly for the citizens of Clayton County each and every day. We are not asking for preferential treatment. We are only asking that the county is fair to magistrate court judges and calculate our salaries in the same manner as every other judge in this county. magistrate court was left out of legislation that would have increased the judges' salaries in 1996 and in 2017. Today, we respectfully ask that the board implement equality and tie the magistrate court judges' salaries to the salaries of the Superior Court judges by resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the judge? And I guess my only question is, those two dates that you just gave us, 2013 and 2017?
1996 and 2017?
Yeah, those.
Yes.
That was not including on the state level, the request to tie you to the.
Correct. The 1996 was a resolution that tied juvenile court and state court, and then 2017 was probate. 2017 was on the state level, but the 1996 resolution is still the, what's being used for juvenile court to be, salaries to be calculated today.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner.
The other day when we were at, when we talked to the state legislators, did you also address that with them then?
I did, and it's the same thing that, that, it's the same thing that the state court did. The state court did it in 1996 through resolution, and then they came back and did it, I think, on the state level.
Okay, because you not get a chance to hear about it.
Right. The point is, the board can do it.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes. Would it be best to do it at the state level or at the local level? Or does it not matter? I mean, granted, it doesn't matter as long as you're getting it.
I would, I would say that in, in the same way the state that they came through the local level, because it might be heard, it might not. But if, if what happened was it came through the local level and it stayed that way, and then when it got to the state level, it just took over on the state level. So we're asking, it can go quicker on the local level, and then once it hits the state level, the state bill will take over.
Yeah. You know, yes, looking at the numbers, we definitely have to do something. That's not the conversation. The conversation for me becomes, how do we do it correctly? How do we do it correctly with all the judges from every level being taken care of fairly? That's my, that's my only issue.
And that's what I'm asking, because all the other judges, with the exception of myself, Judge Kate Johnson, Judge Bridgewater, and Judge Parker, the full-time judges, everybody else is already on the, on the level, on the same level.
How many full times do you have?
Four.
Four, and you're short how many?
That's a whole nother question. Many, many, yes.
So, but you just lost two, so you had six.
She lost two part-time.
Right. No, no, I lost a full-time to Attorney Reed. And, and the part, and the part-time judge now is in juvenile court making significantly more.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, can we have some discussion among ourselves? Excuse me, at some point in time, I'm not sure if it'll be a work session or some other way. So we can find, I can find out what's the process? Because so many times, they say when one set of judges get a raise, then automatically others, maybe probate or whatever, get a raise also. So if we can get some kind of description on the process.
And if I could just address that, it's not, I know on the agenda it says a supplement. I'm not asking for a raise per se. I'm asking the way it's calculated. So juvenile court, probate court, and state court all have a percentage of superior court salary. It starts at 89%, and it goes up 1% until it caps at 95. They're already there. We're based off of population.
Through legislation, they weren't included with the probate and rest of the courts.
Correct. So it's not, so if superior court, if support, superior court's salary goes up, it would bring everyone else up with the exception of us, until we are connected.
So is that how it's done throughout the state? Or is it just Clayton County?
Clayton, well, Clayton County is the only one that's using, is the only metro county that's based by population. That's why the salaries are higher, because they're connected with their superior court judges.
Well, I think it's, I would think, open for discussion.
Yeah. I might as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, Child Advocacy Program. This is presented by Christian City and Dr. Keith Horton, CEO and President of Christian City.
Is he here?
I don't see him right this second.
All right, well, he doesn't appear to be here, so let's move on to the next.
Yes, sir. The next presentation is a public hearing for BOC 2307-0339, which is a text amendment for a comprehensive plan's five-year update kickoff. This is presented by Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. This is our comprehensive plan five-year update. It's mandated by state law that we do this. We have acquired the services of Sizemore Group to do this presentation. And this project of updating our comprehensive plan, it's at the root of everything we've been talking about, about the vision of the county. One of the questions I posed to them was, we would like, I would like to the study, the project, to answer two questions. Who are we as a county, and who do we want to be? Dates underscores economic development, housing, you will get to see all that it encompasses. This is our blueprint for the future, and our expectation on this project is very high. And this evening, I have with me a representative from Sizemore Group to give you a presentation of this kickoff project. And the project concludes next year, and we are asking all citizens to participate. Most of you have scheduled your one-on-one meetings. We also have spoken to some folks that you suggested to be spoken, to participate in the project. So we are looking forward to a great project that will underscore a whole lot in what we've been discussing in the county. At this time, I'll bring Ms. Murphy to the podium.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we have our other commissioner on?
No, she's not online, is what I've been told.
She's not online, okay.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm Deanna Murphy with Sizemore Group, and I will be managing this project overall. Before we get into the full presentation, I wanted to point out on this slide, this is the logo that the Communications Department helped us to create. So we will have a logo specific to this project, and we're looking to brand it under the term Future Focus Clayton. Thank you. So our team on this project includes a comprehensive team. We're starting with Sizemore Group. We are a planning and architecture and interiors firm. We will be the lead planners in project management. We have Sycamore Consulting, who will oversee community engagement throughout the project. And we have Kim Lee Horn Associates, who will look at transportation as well as economics and market understanding. So the overall comprehensive plan, as Mr. Ajiki mentioned, is a requirement of the Department of Community Affairs, or the DCA, to be updated every five years. It is linked to funding, so your CDBG grants, water and sewer loans, economic development, some other funding sources at the state level. You are required to have this document complete and approved by the Department of Community Affairs in order to receive those funds. Overall, though, it really is a plan looking at the future growth of your community, really understanding what are the priorities, what are the projects necessary to achieve that overall vision for the community. The requirements by the Department of Community Affairs are listed here. We'll be looking at analysis of broadband services, and that's really looking at our internet services to make sure that that is equitable and fair throughout the community. We're working with the Community Improvement Plan, that's, or Capital Improvement Plan, that's currently underway, and we'll be incorporating that into this effort. We'll look at economic development, land use, transportation, and housing. All of that combined with an intensive community engagement process will help us understand what the needs and opportunities are, and ultimately what the overall vision is. From there, we create a community work program, and that really is one of the most important documents that come out of this plan, because it's the five-year plan that your department heads will move forward with. So it will have, as you can see on the right-hand side, that's an example from your previous comp plan. It will have the action, when it's to be completed, who's in charge of completing that, and the funding sources necessary. We will not, we will not start from scratch. We want to look at previous studies and plans that were done, especially the previous comprehensive plan that was completed in 2019. So we'll start by looking at the goals, the vision from that, and really look at updating the overall concepts there with that focus that Mr. Ajiki mentioned, which is, who is Clayton County? Who are we? And what do we want to become? Our overall project schedule is roughly a year long, a little over a year. We kicked off in August. We've had meetings with staff. We have started to review past plans. We're currently underway in our technical analysis. We're kicking off with the public tonight. So this is our first public hearing informing that this process is happening, and we'll be sharing some ways to get involved. We are looking at completing this at the end of October. It's due back to the Department of Community Affairs on October 31st. So we will have a process for approval prior to that. This does have to go through a second public hearing, and we'll look at doing that in June. And then we'll come back to the zoning advisory group, as well as back to the Board of Commissioners for approval before that goes to the Department of Community Affairs. Once that's approved by the Community Affairs, we'll ask for your adoption of the comprehensive plan. Our community input starts with several groups. We have already met once with the zoning advisory group prior to this meeting, and we will meet with them again in June. We will have two public hearings, the first one being tonight, where we're introducing this process and the plan, and we're asking for your approval to move forward. And then we'll meet with you again in June to wrap up the overall process, provide recommendations, and ask for your adoption. We are undergoing a series of stakeholder interviews, starting with interviews with you all, and so we do really appreciate your time. We also are interviewing department heads and staff, as well as individuals that you all have helped us identify, to make sure that we're getting a good understanding of what's going on in the community. We'll have four steering committee meetings. Our steering committee is our advisory group. We'll meet with them prior to the community meetings to make sure that we are getting to the community, getting good outreach, and also that we're presenting appropriately and getting the type of feedback that we need from the community. And that steering committee is appointed by members that you all have selected. We are planning six public engagement meetings, and that's in a series of three. This is going to help us get to all four districts within the county. So we'll start with our first series, which is looking at vision and goals. We'll have one meeting in District Three, and we'll have one meeting in District One. And those will be on different times and different days so that we can get a good reach of community members on different corners of the county. Similarly, we'll have a second series of meetings that are more hands-on workshop sessions. One will be in District Two, and one will be in District Four. And then we will have our final wrap-up series, which is our draft recommendations. We'll host those in a, that meeting in a central location, and we'll also have a virtual option, with, all of this with the intent of trying to get to as many citizens as we can. We will also have a community survey online. We will engage in pop-up events, so existing or ongoing events and festivals. We'll be able to go to where the community is and hopefully gather with people who may not be able to come to a meeting. Additional online engagement will happen through our website, which I will show you in a second here. And then we'll also continue to work with your Communication Department to get on your website, get to social media outlets, and make sure that we're getting great outreach. Our social pinpoint is really our website or our hub for the project. It will be a place where individuals can go to understand the overall schedule, how to get engaged, when the community meetings are. We'll also host our survey here, as well as an interactive map to gather deeper input on the project. This will also be linked to county websites so that there is easy access to it. And with that, I want to thank you so much for your time this evening, and I'm here for any comments or questions.
All right, any questions before we go into a public hearing? All right, so at this time, did you have a question, I'm sorry?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner.
You were mentioning the number of public hearings, and you also, I think, said that the end of October, a report would be given to the state. So you only need the one public hearing before the October write-up?
So the process, we will complete the six community meetings. Then we have a public hearing before that goes for their, their review, for the, the DCA's review. So we have a final public hearing, and then we'll come back and meet with you all for approval of the plan. But yes, DCA requirements has one public hearing at the beginning of the process and one at the end to make sure that we are moving forward appropriately.
Now, I had a question. That prompted a question on my behalf. You're talking about the welcome to Clayton County signage. Have you spoken to the Atlanta-Aerotropolis Alliance? They are doing the same thing in some of the northern area.
Yeah. So we have interviews that we're scheduling with the Alliance and with the Aerotropolis CID, so that we can make sure we're coordinating. Absolutely.
Needs to be consistency there.
Thank you.
Okay, and speaking of that, we just had a, what was that the Communications did about?
Rebrand. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you.
The rebrand?
Yes, the rebranding, and now I see you have a different rebranding, right?
Specific for this project.
So it's not for the county?
No, this is specific, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right, that's right, just for the project.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to have a public hearing in reference to this matter or this request. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of what you have heard?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Before I continue on my comment to the new plan, Dr. Horton came in, and I hope that you will give him privilege to speak to his presentation. With that being said, let me speak to the comprehensive, this new plan map drawing. The only thing that I would like to say is that you make no changes of the map from this point here until the situation, till the new map and drawing is completed. That's all I'm asking for, because if we go willy-nilly and make chan, changes during the process of the new map drawing, it will just foul up everything and won't give you a real vision. We have to stop doing things willy-nilly at this point. Let the map get drawn and go from there. I'm not saying to stop all business, but stay within the plan that you already have in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the request.
We don't need a motion. This is just a public hearing right now.
Okay, so we're not voting on it tonight?
Right.
Okay, fair enough. Let's move on to the next. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, Dr. Horton's here. And per Mickey Garber, we need to hear from him. So at this time, we're going to have a presentation. Christian City, CEO, Dr. Horton.
I apologize profusely for being late today. Ms. Samantha Bowling, my Executive Director of Family and Children Services. Thank you all so much for allowing Christian City to come before you. Again, my name is Keith Horton. I'm the President and CEO of Christian City. And I have with me my Executive Director of Family and Children Services at Christian City. For those of you who may not know, we are presenting a, just a proposal on assuming operations at the former Rainbow House. One of the things that hurt us really badly was the fact that we were partners with Rainbow House over a number of years, and as a matter of fact, we took in some of the kids when they ceased operations. We are now covering part of their area in regards to safe place. And as we go through the presentation, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Gotcha. So those of you who may not know, but Christian City was founded in nineteen sixty-two. Just a quick history. In nineteen sixty-two, on the premise of providing a safe haven for children, we now comprise of five hundred acres. We have two hundred and ninety-one apartments for seniors sixty-two and above, two hundred and fifteen homes on our campus, life lease homes for seniors sixty-five and above. And then what we have is a outstanding, very credible children's village that has five programs in it. And I'm going to go through those programs and then highlight the programs that will be applicable for operations at the former Rainbow House. And as a matter of fact, the Rainbow House, if I'm not mistaken, was founded by Phil Coons, gentleman who later became the Executive Director of Children and Family Programs at Christian City. He passed away a couple of years, but it was his desire to ensure that children who were abandoned, abused, neglected in Clayton County were provided a safe haven so they did not have to go outside of the county boundary. And one of the things that we're facing right now is the placement of children in Clayton County. I've been a resident Clayton County for twenty-three years. And right now, what we're doing is, Ms. Danika Manning, she's taking kids that are, taking them outside of the county to be served. Not all, but some of the kids are going outside of the county to be served when they should be served right here in the county. All right, this is our part of the residential program. This kind of mirrors what we have right here at Christian City. These are the children that are placed with us by the state. We are proposing a residential program. I think it's a twenty-two-bed facility. But that, the overview gives you an idea of what happens with a child, and I'm going to go step by step on the next slide. What happens with a child ages five through seventeen. So we're licensed for what is called MWO, Maximum Watchful Oversight. So regardless, if you choose us or choose another vendor, make sure that that vendor or that provider can provide maximum watchful oversight. So we are licensed for maximum watchful oversight, which means that we can take in youth who have intense behavioral needs. So we go through the process of identifying, working with the state caseworker for a child that's placed in our care, custody, and oversight. We go through an assessment with staff. We have expert staff. We also have contracted experts to work with particular youth. We go through a treatment plan, which is about the education, the health care, as well as seeing a psychiatrist or psychologist if needed. And then the child goes through an acclimation period. That child is either placed at the Clayton location, which we're saying would be the former Rainbow House, or if there's an overflow, we have capacity on our campus to take in youth as well. They will continue to go to school and in the Clayton County School, and what happens is, if you have a child that is placed outside of the county or away from, a good distance away, that, that exacerbates the traumatization that the kid has simply because he's away from parents, might not be able to visit on a regular basis with his parents, or may not be able to attend the school that he has friends or she has friends with. So acclimation is extremely important, and I think one of the things that we do that is a little different from most providers is we encourage our kids to go to this church. And we believe in the spiritual well-being of our youth that we serve. And then we work with DFACS to, on a reunification of that particular youth with their parents, if possible. If not, then we'll look at long-term placement, either at a foster home, or look at long-term placement at Christian City. We had six graduates from our program last year that graduated from high school simply because their parental, the parents' parental rights were terminated or because their parents did not want to have anything to do with them. And they went on and matriculated through the schools that we sent them to. They graduated, and we have a couple that are in college right now. We have a young man that's playing football at Shorter. So we're very proud of what we do at Christian City in providing the educational opportunities, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. And then the next program, so there are two main programs that we really want to focus about. The residential program, which is the shelter that Rainbow House was performing, the operations that they were performing, and then the Safe Place program. And this program is for homeless and runaway youth. There are many homeless and runaway youth programs, but this is a national program, really sponsored by QuickTrip. They are the, they have the participating site, so we partner with QuickTrip. And on this particular program, this is designed so that we can take those youth off the streets so they're not trafficked by predators. We actually go into the school systems and talk with the counselors. This is a youth-initiated program for homeless and runaway. We average about three youth per month that come through this particular program. Now, Rainbow House was performing Safe Place, and they were, they had this area. They had Clayton County, they had Fayette County, parts of Fayette County, and they had other, a couple of other counties. When they ceased operations, the program ceased in those areas. We immediately took over voluntarily, without asking for any additional funds, took over those places because we thought it was necessary to ensure that the kids that called in had a safe haven, had a place to come if they were runaway or homeless youth. Again, this is how the program works. We monitor, we have a twenty-four-seven hotline. They're safety, they're brought to a location. They'll be brought to the Rainbow House if we're chosen as provider. They'll be brought to the former Rainbow House or to our campus, and they can stay up to twenty-one days. Their parents are notified immediately, and then DFACS is notified within three days. The support, we provide all the, all the support services necessary after three days for the youth to ensure that they are stabilized. And then we look for reunification. If there's no reunification plan, then those individuals, those youth are placed into our, into our residential program. And we have youth who have gone through our residential program, who have graduated from, graduated from high school. We had a young lady whose parents left her, went to, her parent was from England, came over to visit, left the child with the grandmother, and then flew back and did not want the child back. And so she was sixteen years old, young lady, finished, finished high school, and then enrolled in college. So we're very proud of what we do and how we take, we help with, on the homeless and runaway youth within our area of operations. Feel free to stop me as I go along. This is our budget. I wanted to make sure that you understood that we're a credible organization. We have funding. Wanted you to see the funding that we have. We, just for our children's village, we spent a lot of money. So this is not a money-making proposition that we're offering. This is a mission-oriented proposition that we're saying. And I would encourage you, if somebody's coming and saying that they want to provide services, make sure they can do MWO and make sure they have the funding to do that. Most of the funding that we, we receive is through philanthropy. It is not through the state. We do have some grants, but most of it we raise. The per diem that the state provides for a child in DFACS custody is, provides about seventy percent, and some providers will tell you anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the care is covered through state per diem. The rest has to be made up through philanthropy or through grants. We provide a lot more than most providers do. If you look at one of the lines on the education, we've already allocated a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for education, because we, we believe in making sure that the, the kids that come through our doors are treated like they are the most valuable human beings ever. And so we want to make sure that our kids that come through our doors have tutoring, and that if they're, if it's necessary for them to go to a private school, then we send them to a private school to get that one-on-one attention. Any questions about that? So you have the children's village on it, children's village-only budget. You also have our, we have five programs, so we have three other programs, and that totals about four point seven million. I think one of the things that you want to note is that at the bottom, we have, we're an eleven-point-seven-million-dollar budget. That includes our senior living as well, and then we have a ten-point-five-million-dollar endowment. We're one of the few organizations in the, in the state, social service organizations, that has an endowment. And so we established endowment back in two thousand twenty-one. Very proud of the fact that we have that financial stability. And then here's our proposal if conditions are met, and if you see that we are fit for the former Rainbow House. Phase one, forty-five days, hire staff, train staff, develop relationships, Title I supportive education supports, and go on and on. Meet with, meet and train existing Safe Place connecting partners, and coordinate with state inclusion of site for maximum watchful oversight licensure. And then phase two, it's not an additional sixty days. It's just saying that within those sixty days, prepare facility for operations, meet with DFACS. We've already, as a matter of fact, Mrs. Danika Manning, who is the county director, has reached out to me several times about resuming operations and asking if we would be the ones to resume operations. So I'm coming before you all to let you know that we do have support from the county. They are, they are, they understand our organization. They have relationship, we have relationships with the county DFACS in Clayton County, and they would love for us to be the ones to provide the services to this great county. And then the staff will occupy building, press release, and then phase three would be the youth placement. So within ninety days, we will be up and running. Now, here's a slide that really just gives you some idea on, before the Rainbow House closure, the Rainbow House, there are four providers across the metro Atlanta area for runaway and homeless youth. And Rainbow House had the Fayette County, Henry County, Clayton County, and had Rockdale, Rockdale County. You see right now what we've done. After the Rainbow House closure, we went ahead and assumed their area of operations. I was in contact with the National Safe Place Director yesterday, and we're going to be in official talks to take over the area completely. So we'll have all the counties, Fayette, Henry, Clayton, Rockdale, all of Fulton County, Cobb, Fayette, Coweta, City of Decatur, DeKalb, and Carroll County. And then here's our request.
Hold on a second, Dr. Horton.
Sure.
Commissioner Hambrick has a question.
Well, I don't have a question.
Sure.
I, I just have a statement. Can we read the packet?
Oh, absolutely.
And possibly get back with you, because there are some questions about the building, the Rainbow House.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then there are other questions. I don't know if we decided that we want to get a replacement or whatever.
Absolutely.
Can we just read this?
There are some, some legal issues with the building that's being looked at.
Absolutely, absolutely. I was just coming to just propose.
I mean, it sounds good, you know, but I really want to be able to really concentrate on this, and this is one of our longer board meetings with zoning and all. So if we could just read this and possibly get back with you.
Absolutely.
I mean, if that's the agreement.
I'm almost, I'm almost finished. You want me to just cut it off now? Is that what you asked? Is that what you said?
Speed through the rest of it right quick, but nothing keeps us from bringing you back on the news.
Exactly.
Okay.
Please, go ahead and finish.
I'll finish, and I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, yeah, I'll give you the highlight. So our request, our request is very simple.
Well, well.
Yeah, I very, I request.
Sessions and work session, you could just talk on and on, like, no, 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 no.
Okay, I got you, Commissioner. I got you, I got you. I got you. Just really quickly, we have a couple of other programs that, just to make note of, our foster care program, and then we have our independent living program that very excited about, it's 18 to 24, so we have essentially continuing with care from, from, from zero to 24. And, and then we have a healthy family program, which we're very excited about. We, we see a lot of families in the Clayton County area. So that's all that I have. And I'll be glad, I'll be glad to come back and discuss in detail after you had time to digest it.
Okay. That would be on one of our work sessions.
And also, if you could leave some contact information should any individual commissioner want to call you prior to.
In the packets, you have my card there, so you can contact me anytime, and I'll speak to you individually.
Great.
And I want to yield the rest of my time to whoever's next.
Anybody have, before you go, anybody have any questions for Dr. Horton?
Our work session would be better.
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis.
I just have one question. You said you started that endowment in 2021?
Endowment in 2021.
And so pretty much from just last giving, you all have raised 10 and 1/2 million dollars for that endowment.
Yeah, we had some proceeds, we had some proceeds, and we have, and we started an endowment. We're one of the few, like I said, one of the few that, social service agencies that has an endowment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Madam Clerk.
The Board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions on any other items? Here and now, those are favor I.
I.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 11, 2024 Benefits Renewal. This is presented by Human Resources.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Angela Woods, Human Resources Manager for Benefits Administration and Workers' Comp. Last week during the work session, we presented the, well, our broker, MMA, Jack Thompson, presented the 2024 benefits package, and we heard you loud and clear with Commissioner Franklin suggesting that the increase be split amongst the county. So today, we will be presenting the request with the numbers showing that split. Currently, the split is 7228, and Jack will be able to present that.
Thank you, Angela. Do I have all of these?
Good evening, Chairman Turner, Commissioners Anderson, Hambrick, and Davis. Thank you again for the privilege to be here and to present the 2024 Benefits Renewal, both for your active employees as well as for your retirees. On behalf of my team members, Maureen Rosen and Tanisha Gamblin, as well as Rory Callahan with Brown Financial Group, it's a privilege to be here. Last Tuesday evening, at this time, we went through this presentation in detail, and so I want to be respectful of your time and as thorough as you want me to be, but also to hit the highlights at the same time. I'll pause and ask, would you like for me to present the information again, or should I only cover? There are four slides that have been added to this, two slides in the retiree packet and two slides in the active packet. Do you have a preference as to how that I do that?
Well, let's hear from one of the board members, I think since we had that presentation last week, I think we can get by with the four, four slides.
So the four slides. Very good. At the request of Vice Chair Franklin, she asked us to go back and to recalculate the cost share between the county and the active employees or the retirees. And so based on your direction, I'm going to cover the cost share change. In your packet, on the very front, it'll say 2024 Benefit Plan Change. I'm in the booklet where it says retiree Medicare and retiree assistance. If you'll turn to slide six, you do have it. You are awesome. Thank you so much. Very good. So this is the Kaiser Medicare Supplement Program. You'll see that in 2023, the annual premium is $816,144. The initial renewal would increase that to $848,790. It's a 4% increase. Down in the bottom left-hand corner, under the traditional method, the county would pay 72% of that, and the retirees would pay 28%. The information that's in green, I'm colorblind, but I believe that's lime green or pretty close to it, it's still the same 4% increase, $32,646. However, the county would increase its contribution to 73%, and the retirees would decrease their contribution to 27%. The net effect is that there would not be a increase to the retirees for the Kaiser Senior Advantage Plan. Moving on to slide nine.
May I ask this?
Commissioner.
Okay, have you all talked with finance or whatever, or do we need to do that to find out about the, the change and all as far as the county's concerned?
Have you spoken with finance to see what the financial impact is?
Right.
Or is it in the slide?
The, it's in the slide. We have not spoken to finance previously to, to talk about this, but if the, the changes, if you'll go back two slides, one more, right there. So in this particular situation, the numbers are the same as, as we presented last week. The county's increase in cost, you'll see, is $9,141 in this particular benefit. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hambrick?
I'm looking over at finance to see what kind of expression. Well, maybe we'll just hear all of it and then.
But just to clarify, on this particular plan, the impact to the county is $9,141?
That's correct.
Okay. Proceed on.
If you'll move forward to slide nine, this is the Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan. Go back one slide if you will. The original requested increase from Aetna was 16.3%. Maureen Rosen on my team went back twice and lowered that to 13.4 and then 12%. The primary drivers on this are pharmacy claims in the specialty pharmacy claims area. And so if you'll move forward to the next slide, so the total cost currently is $1,172,000. The increase would take that to $1,313,000. On the left-hand side, normally, the county cost for that is $101,634, and the retirees pay $39,524. That's the cost increase. So the revised adjustment based on the county absorbing the cost of this, it's the same numbers, however, the county absorbed that. So in this situation, the county is picking up $39,524 of increased cost by absorbing those numbers. There are 457 retirees that are enrolled in this plan. Moving on, the Delta Dental Renewal is a decrease in cost, so those payroll deductions would stay the same. There is a total of, a projected reduction of $34,344. It shows the split of cost below at 7228 because the, and this is for your active employees as well as for your retirees, the Delta Dental Plan, the PPO Plan covers all of them. And so there's no payroll deduction change, and actually a slight reduction in the cost there. And then if you'll move forward to slide 14, this is the DHMO, Delta Dental DHMO, it's fully insured. There was no rate increase, and they offered a two-year rate guarantee. So down below, you'll see the cost share, 72% paid by the county, 28% by the employees. There again, there is no change to the employee cost. And then finally, for the IMED, on slide 16, over in the left-hand corner in a box, you'll see that the Vision Annual Premium is $249,176. This is 100% voluntary, employee-paid. There is no change to the cost, and at the very top, it says that the rates are guaranteed for four years. If you'll go to the next slide, there is an enhancement to the plan with 2024. If your members see the I360 providers and a provider plus network, then instead of a $10 copay, it's a zero, $0 copay, and their frame allowance is increased from $130 to $180. And the tagline, 97% of I360 members who visit a plus provider are satisfied with their benefits. So they're not forced to go to these providers, it's voluntary on their part, but if they do, they have an enriched benefit, and the costs are the same. So again, on the two dental plans and on the Vision Plan, there's no cost. On the two retiree Medicare supplement plans, we simply shifted the cost so that the retirees would not experience an increase in their deduction from their pension checks.
All right, any questions?
So, okay, if you calculate the, the, the extra burden on the county is what, about $83,000, somewhere around there?
But we also had a reduction in one of the plans that was $34,000.
I really liked the way on the I care when you put that in real small letters, so we think we really need an I insurance here.
We can certainly enhance it. If that would be a request, we're happy to do that. There is no compensation paid to MMA for that, but we're, we certainly would be happy to do that. So in answer to your question, the increase to the county is $9,000 approximately for the Kaiser Plan, and about $40,000, so about $49,000 increase to the county. And to your point, when you subtract from that, the, the reduction in the dental cost, you're looking at about a $15,000 variance to the county year over year.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So moving on, the next presentation that you have in front of you is for the two medical plans, and this is for your active employees and pre-65 retirees as well. And so the first one is the Kaiser Medical Plan. You'll recall that Kaiser's expenses are higher this year than they have been in past years. Inflation, as you know, is up, and also Kaiser's labor contracts are coming due, they're coming off of a four-year contract guarantee. You hear, if you've been listening to the news, the United Auto Workers are going through something similar. Kaiser is also going through that with their labor contracts with their employees that work in their group practice models. Because of that, their renewals are higher this year than they ordinarily are. Our actuarial department looked at this and think that, thinks that the renewal should be just under 10%. Your claims experience has run well, 86%. The industry standard is 85%. So for every dollar that you pay in premium, they're paying out about 86 cents. So your loss ratios are, are pretty good, which is encouraging. On the next slide, Kaiser, their formula is just under 20%. They reduced that to 15. So the total increase is $1,587,000, and then we go through the iteration, 72% to the county and 28% to the employees. There is a wellness fund of $190,000. If you'll go to the next slide, in order to help reduce the overall increase, we asked for some plan design modifications. Under the low deductible $750 HMO copay plan, the deductible goes from $750 to $1,000, and then there are slight increases to the emergency room copay, the office visit copay when you see a primary care physician, and the out-of-pocket maximum. And then similarly, on the $2,000 deductible plan, an increase in the deductible from $2,000 to $2,500, the cost for the ambulance, 75 to 200, and then the emergency room, 200 to 250, and then the office visit increase from 35 to 40. By making those changes, it would reduce the renewal from about 15 and 1/2% to about 11 and 1/2%. So on the next slide, we went through these iterations previously, and you'll see that the overall increase was reduced from $1,587 to $1,219,000. We applied the 7228 split, and so the increases are listed down below, 877 to the county, 341 to the employees. Moving on to the next slide, and this is new, something you haven't seen before, in order to absorb the increase of $1,219,000, then we changed the split from 72% for the county to 75% down below. And the active employees, instead of paying 28%, would pay 25. So the estimated cost projection for the county is 8.8 million, and the cost increase for the employees, there is none, so that their payroll deductions would stay the same. This is a $341,000 savings to the employees, which means that the county is picking up $341,000 in the form of increased cost share. Moving on to the Anthem Commercial Renewal, the administrative cost, which is the cost that Anthem charges to pay claims, to have a website, to provide the doctor's network, the call center for all of the patients to call in, their costs went up slightly, it's a $19,000 increase, and so the total annual administration fee is $694,000. It's a 2.8% adjustment. There is a wellness fund of $280,000 in this overall plan. On the top left-hand side, you've seen all of these numbers previously, and this will give you a very quick breakdown. What, what are the components of a self-funded medical plan? You have administration currently at $675,000, that will increase to $694,000. The stop-loss insurance is $1,700,000 currently. We project that to go to $1,925,000. However, on the drive down today, I talked to our Stop Loss Center of Excellence, we are anticipating a more favorable renewal, a lower renewal there. We will come back to you in two weeks on October the 3rd to firm that up. You'll see that the projected medical and pharmacy claims are $12.6 million currently, and they are projected to go to $13.9 million. Pharmacy rebates are just over $1 million currently, we project those to go up to $1,177,000. So the total cost currently is $13.9 million, almost $14 million. The projection next year is $15,391,000. In plain English, it's about a 10% increase. If you look at the split currently for 28%, the increase is $1,513,400 for the employees. When we go through the same change in plan design that we discussed previously on the next slide, that will reduce the cost increase from 10% down to 9%. Again, go on to the next slide, all of these numbers you saw last week. So the only difference here is on slide 16. So the only difference here is on slide sixteen. We have changed the percentage down at the bottom. Instead of seventy-two-twenty-eight, we are projecting that with these plan design changes, you'll have to pay seventy-four thousand in the, or seventy-four percent, and the employees would have to pay twenty-six percent. And so if you look at the difference, it's about three-hundred-thousand dollars in cost that the county is absorbing by paying that and not passing along the cost increase to the employees. I'll pause there and see what questions you have regarding the cost share changing so that the payroll deductions do not change for the employees.
Are we being asked to decide on any of this tonight?
Yes, and that leads us to the final section, which is this. All of these numbers are firm, except for the stop-loss insurance. So we would like for you to vote on the retiree, the Medicare Supplement Program with Kaiser, the Medicare Supplement Program with Aetna, the Delta Dental, and the IMED Vision Program. Those are all set and ready to be voted on and approved, assuming that that's your desire. We're also asking you to approve the Kaiser Fully Insured Medical Renewal as well. All of those numbers are firm and ready to be approved. The only variable, the only thing we're not asking you to vote on, is the Anthem Self-Funded Medical Plan. We will firm up that stop-loss quote. I'm very optimistic that it will be more favorable than what we've presented, and we will ask you to vote on that at your next working or at your next regular session, which is on Tuesday, October the third. And by doing that, you allow our team and HR to get at the business of getting your open enrollment done. So all that the retiree open enrollment can be prepared, and that will be, it will free up Aetna to get all of those kits out in the mail, along with Kaiser, which is required federally. It will allow us to get the benefit administration system built out. And so the final piece of that will be the stop-loss insurance, and that can follow on October the third, and we still think we will hit our open enrollment stated objectives or deadlines.
Okay, so can the retirement plan be held until October, whatever? I would feel more comfortable with finance, looking at this, looking at the numbers. I feel okay, really, with the first part of your presentation, that you said we could go ahead with tonight. I feel fairly comfortable, and I've been watching facial expressions, so I feel okay with that, but the Anthem, I'm not.
Yeah, and that's the part we're asking you to hold and not vote on, because we don't have firm stop-loss numbers, but we will in a couple of weeks, and we can certainly get with finance, true that up, and make sure they're crystal clear on that. But the dollars on the dental, or, excuse me, on the Medicare Supplement Programs are very small, and the cost for the dental and the vision are actual either reductions or no changes there. And then the Kaiser Fully Insured Plan is solid there as well, so.
All of the plans that you presented was, there was not a built-in increase to the employees, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the total amount of what you want us to approve tonight, what is that amount? You have to go back and add it up. You got that look.
I know, one was nine thousand, and then something was forty-something.
No, there's a higher end on the Kaiser's part. And do we know what that number is?
I think we said that for the Medicare Supplement Plans, the dental and the Vision Plan, the difference was a grand sum total of about thirty thousand dollars to the county additionally, from what we had talked about last week.
I thought that was for the retirees.
Yes, sir, for the Medicare, for the Medicare Supplement Plans, the dental and the Vision Plan. It's about a thirty thousand dollar difference, because your dental insurance costs are projected to go down, because your claims costs are projected to go down.
Commissioner Anderson. You're good.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions?
I'm good with it.
Okay, well, let's move on then.
Tell us this stuff ahead of time. That's all I'm just saying, just come on, y'all.
All right, so you've heard the presentation, so entertain a motion to approve everything except the stopgap with the.
Stop-loss with Anthem.
Anthem.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Commissioner Anderson, seconded the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number twelve, Resolution 2023-192, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Resolution 2023-192 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept the annexed properties located within the city of Jonesboro into unincorporated Clayton County per request from Key Street LLC to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
So what does this mean?
It means that, the short version is that a property owner wants to come, not, no longer be a part of the city of Jonesboro. So there's a two-step process. They've, the city has to say yes, and the county has to say yes, and so this is part of that process.
Okay, so they want to be in the county.
They want to be now a part of unincorporated Clayton County.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number nineteen.
Item nineteen is ordinance 2023-209, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, specifically to amend Chapter Two, Administration, Article Three, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Division Six, License Review Board, to add Section Two-dash-ninety-point-ten, entitled Oversight for Revoked or Voluntarily Surrended Business Licenses, to add Section Two-dash-ninety-point-eleven, entitled Effective Violation of Conditional Approval of License, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for several ability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, can you give us a brief description of what this means?
Yes. What this does is it provides an authority for the License Review Board to continue to have jurisdiction over cases. Right now, the way that if something happens and they revoke a license or suspend, well, revoke a license generally, there's nothing that prevents another person from opening something at that same location under, with the same type of business with a different name. So this just allows them to be able to have additional oversight, to make sure that whoever's coming back in isn't coming up with some other type of name.
So just as, for us, it's like the Rainbow House, if somebody comes in.
With a Rainbow Home or Rainbow Lodge or something like that, just as an example, but not, so that would be the, and that would be the main thing.
Any other questions?
Yes, we have that March thirty-first date on there.
Yes.
So why would we extend that period of time? I know that they're not doing till then effectively, or late till after that date.
That would be the main reason. If we, if we waited and did it in December, there's still that gap period. So we want to make sure that it goes all the way until they are no longer able to have a license under our ordinance. We give a grace period through March thirty-first.
Okay. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item nineteen.
Resolution 2023-215 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with certain community charitable organizations, governmental agencies, and professional service providers located and conducting business in Clayton County to authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Madam Clerk, I believe you said item.
For the record, that's item.
Oh.
For the record, that is item number twenty-one, nineteen.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, it's twenty-one. We just did nineteen, okay.
And I believe there was some additions made to this at this time. I'm gonna have Ms. Jackson to come and state what those additions are.
The additions since the review at the work session, Gigi's House, an additional five-thousand for a total of ten thousand. The Good Shepherd Clinic, a change was made right prior to this meeting, so a total of ten thousand, which would take them to thirty thousand. The Haley Bankhead Foundation, an additional five thousand for a total of ten thousand. Alzheimer's Support, an additional ten, which would take them to a total of forty-five. Ujima Way, an additional five thousand, which would take them to a total of ten thousand. Club Exhale Youth Life Center, an additional five thousand, which would take them to a total of twenty thousand.
What was the last one?
Club Exhale Youth Life Center.
And that is all, that had all the additions? You see something different?
Well, maybe I'm missing something. Hold on, hold on. I'm thinking thirty, thirty-two something.
That one was, that addition was removed.
Yes, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So that is no longer on the.
It's on here.
It's on there for five thousand, not for the additional twenty-seven-five.
And that's for the school itself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then that's my question, for the school itself. This is a charter school.
Correct, and currently, they're on the list for five thousand. If the board would like to remove that, they can do so at this time.
But let me also say this, it's a charter school, but I believe their request or the application was under the Youth Serve, which is a five-one-one C-three.
Correct, correct.
What does Youth Serve do?
That's there.
The homeless.
The homeless.
Any other questions?
Is it too late for increases?
They haven't been vetted, ma'am.
Well.
The, let me ask this question, though, to your point. I don't know how much money that leaves.
It leaves fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred.
But that could be set aside to other projects or other requests at a later time as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm not speaking of the fifty-five, but I am speaking of the thirty-something that was added on here, which really would have been twenty-something.
The twenty-seven-five is a part of the fifty-five-five that's remaining.
Okay. Well, I was just asking regarding the Ujima Way, who serves homeless.
I've never heard of it.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I would like to make an increase for that organization for ten, which would be a total of twenty.
Okay.
For an additional ten percent. Additional ten, correct?
An additional ten, yes.
Okay.
I know they were. Yes, ten.
Okay, five thousand had already been added. Do you want ten on top of that five, or you want a total of ten added?
It would, it would be a total proposed of twenty.
Okay.
I'm confused. So you said ten and five.
They have ten now.
Okay, I thought they had five now. I thought they had five.
She had originally said five more, and then she's asking for a time on top of that for a total of twenty.
Correct.
All right, anybody else?
This is a homeless, this is a group that serves the homeless, in case anybody is inquiring about it, whatever, and they actually do what they say they're gonna do.
Yes, ma'am.
And they work with some other organizations here in the county also. I know they've gotten a couple of folk off the street in District Two.
I think that's it. So at this time, is there a motion to approve with the amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is Resolution 2023-20217, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Eritropolis Atlanta Alliance, Strive ATL, and Clayton County Public Schools to provide financial support for workforce development partnership, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions?
Can you just give us a little more clarification on that, this, this resolution project?
Chairman and Board, this is a reflection of Eritropolis, and Strive ATL came to us and asked for initially in the work session, a hundred thousand dollars. One of the things the board went back and asked is to see whether we can bring in additional funders to assist with this workforce development project. They went forth and got an additional twenty thousand dollars from the school system, five thousand dollars from the United Way, therefore bringing our balance down to the seventy-five-thousand. We're looking to bring the seventy-five thousand from our, from ARPA fund, so we may not hit the general fund for this. So this is the reason why you see a seventy-five thousand dollar request opposed at a hundred thousand.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, next.
Our next item is item number twenty-five, ordinance 2023-203.
Actually, item number twenty-five does not require a public hearing. This is actually just a resolution to amend, let me start over. Ordinance 2023-203 is actually an ordinance, a resolution, it should be Resolution 2023-203. It's a resolution to amend the Official Code of Clayton County, Georgia, specifically to initiate amendments to Appendix A, Article One, Basic Provisions, Section 1.5, defined words, to initiate map and text amendments for hospital-type uses, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. And this is, the reason why this does not require a public hearing, is that you're not making a decision on what that looks like now. You're just initiating the process, and it'll come back to the board for what that looks like in about sixty days.
So we need to take a vote on it?
Just a vote, yes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
All right, item twenty-six does require a public hearing, and this is ordinance 2023-208, which is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance, specifically to amend Appendix A, Article Six, Development Standards, Section 6.7, Architecture and Appearance. AA to amend Section 6.8, Architectural and Appearance for Commercial and Industrial. AC to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, provide for codification, to provide for several ability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. And Mr. Jekke can, I guess, tell a little bit about what those actual architecture standards are gonna be.
Mr. Jekke?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board, we usually, in implementation and interpretation of zoning, running into questions as people can, or our customers speaking apart the code. So we want to consolidate and make sure that the vision and aesthetics of the county is uniform in the code. That's what this is about, so we can have a reference point when they say, where is it in the code? We can say, this is where it's, this is where it's in the code, that our, what we're trying to enforce is the aesthetics and the vision of the county.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. So at this time, this is a public hearing in reference to a board of commissioners' request. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor of?
Can I go down and speak?
Anybody in opposition to? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? And I see staff recommendations for approval, as well as ZAG's recommendations for approval as well. So at this time, I entertain a motion for approval.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Item twenty-seven is ordinance twenty-twenty-three two-ten, an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance specifically, Appendix A, Article One, Section one point five, defined words, to amend Article Three, Section three point two-nine, LI, Light Industrial District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, and Section three point three-six, land use matrix, to regulate the zoning use classification, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. And this, this text amendment is a board-initiated text amendment to regulate self-storage facilities. And this does require a public hearing as well.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. So what we are doing is adding definition, or adding three words to the existing definition of mini warehouse, so that if we read mini warehouse, self-storage facility. Additionally, in the land use matrix, we are renaming it as well, and then making it clear that this is not permitted in the mixed-use zoning district. It is, but it requires a conditional use permit in the MXI, LI, and HI, and that's mixed industrial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. It is already a conditional use permit in the general business zoning district. And then, this is the, Section three dot twenty-nine, light industrial, and so we're moving, removing the trailer and tractor and trailer storage from permitted use and moving it to conditional use. And we're also, thank you. That's, that's what we have.
All right, thank you. This is a board of commissioners' request. This time it's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this request? Please come forward. Anyone in favor of?
I would like to ask some questions here.
Come forward, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber Incorporated, Rex, Georgia. Members, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my question about the tractor-trailers' storage, eh, I'm sorry. Huh? Only doing it self-storage? I got no comment there.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
I do have one question. So, we're allowing the self-storage to still remain in general business?
As a conditional use only.
Oh, as conditional use only even?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Item twenty-eight is ordinance twenty-twenty-three two-eleven, which is an ordinance to amend, specifically Appendix A, Article One, Section one point five, defined words, Article Three, Section three point nine, LI, Light Industrial District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, and Section three point three-six, land use matrix, and Article Six, to add a new Section six point five-three, truck and trailer parking. This is to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of the ordinance and for other purposes. And this is to address truck and trailer parking, as Terrace will explain some more.
Okay, so this will add a new definition, which is for tractor-truck parking, which is location where primary trucks, tractors, tractor-trailers, truck-trailers, trailers, or semi-trailers are parked. Excuse me. This is in existing, in addition to the existing tractor-trailer storage definition, which we are not changing, we are also creating a new subsection or section under Article Six, which is the development standards, and that is for the tractor-truck parking, tractor-trailer storage. And this way, we want to make certain that the, that there is a principal building on site that is minimum two hundred square foot in size, along with providing the restroom facilities for the, the, the truckers at that location. And we are proposing to allow for dense-grated crust stone with steel reinforcement, which is also known as gravel, instead of asphalt or concrete. And we're moving the tractor and trailer storage from permitted use to the conditional use. And therefore, the tractor, tractor-trailer storage will be a conditional use in the MXI, mixed-use industrial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. And same thing with the tractor-truck parking, conditional use permit in the MXI, LI, and HI. It is already, because it has already permitted use in the LI, that means it was permitted in the MXI as a permitted use. And so, we're correcting the land use matrix as well. The staff, we recommend approval. Zach recommendation was denied because of the fact that MXI would, would, would still permit tractor parking if approved by the board of commissioners.
All right, this is a board of commissioners' request once again. At this time, if there's anyone, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I think I got something to say here.
Now, I think you can come on up, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber Incorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, member of the board, I would like to also, if it meets to your approval to pass this, that not only that you include bathroom facilities for the truckers in and out of there, but also that the ordinance provide for a dumpster, because when these truckers go unload a load, there, there's debris left on the, on the trailer, the dunage, do you know what I mean by dunage? That's material used to stabilize the load, but will no longer be needed at the next pickup, or shrink wrap, or anything that would be, find its way onto our streets, is what I'm trying to say. That each one of these truck parking facilities should have a dumpster for, for getting rid of unloaded things that are not needed when they go to the next load. And I think that would aid in, in helping keeping our county clean, or getting it cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, some move.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
I do have one question.
Commissioner Davis?
Isn't it already, it's already stated that these facilities have to have trash receptacles?
No, it's not specifically referenced in the code.
But if they come before us, we can make that a requirement.
Yeah, we can add it as number four condition.
Yes.
Yeah.
We just can't add it to at this point?
We can.
Well... It may be better until the board decides what it wants, what it wants to do as far as a comprehensive approach to the issue. From a all-practical standpoint, if they're using truck parking, they may already need someone to have trash. You know, they'll have some sort of trash type of environment there, even because we're gonna require a building. So if somebody's in there, that we have some, some place for them have to put trash there. If we put it as a, what I don't wanna do is have someone put a dumpster there, and then they don't have trash service. So, when the board decides how they wanna compre, how they want to handle that, then I think that will take care of that issue as well.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Item twenty-nine is twenty-twenty-three, sorry, ordinance twenty-twenty-three two twelve, an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance specific to amend Appendix A, Article Two, zoning districts established, Section two point one, establishment of standard districts, to amend Article Three, zoning district intent, uses and standards, Section three point three-six, land use matrix, to regulate the zoning use classification, to add a new Section three point three-nine, RTH, single-family residential attached town home district intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, to add a new Section three point four, zero, RTH, single-family residential attached town home district standards, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
So the genesis of this request is looking at the old zoning ordinance from nineteen-eighty-seven. That zoning ordinance had a district called RMTH, which is multifamily residential town homes. And so, we wanted to allow for the development of townhomes, or providing another zoning district for the development of townhomes, because multifamily residential really is truly multifamily. Townhomes are classified as single-family residential attached. And so, that's, so that, that's why we wanted to proceed with, or provide this request. And so, as far as the permitted uses and conditional uses, it's very limited, home occupations, the rawest telecommunications facility tower. The, with the, a couple of highlights of the proposed standards are that minimum development size would be five acres. And minimum lot area is twenty-four hundred square feet to accommodate the required two-car garages, along with, the minimum living area was from, borrowed from the RM zoning district. And required open space was five percent of the total gross acreage. So staff recommended, recommend approval, as far as ZAG.
All right, this is a public hearing once again. Request by the board of commissioners, is there anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Item thirty is just the last of the board initiated items, is ordinance twenty-twenty-three two thirteen, which is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance specifically to amend Appendix A, Article Nine, non-conforming structures, lots and uses, Section nine point six, non-conforming signs, to amend Article Ten, Boards and Commissioners, Section ten point seven, appeals, to amend Article Thirteen, processes, permits, and fees, Section thirteen point seven, notice of public hearing, Section thirteen point twelve, appeals to Superior Court, and Section thirteen point eighteen, appeals to Superior Court, to add a new Article fifteen entitled certiorari, to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. I can probably speak a little bit more to this. There, this ordinance does a number of things to clean up a conflict within our zoning ordinance related to how we address non-conforming signs. In one area, we had a whole list of requirements for non-conforming signs, which was in Article, section, section eight, Article eight of the zoning ordinance. And then we had a conflicting way of treating them in Section nine point six. So basically, we're just striking all that and say, go look at what we said in Article eight. The other things that are there are basically things that are required by state law, as it relates to how appeals of zoning decisions are made, how you provide notice of public hearings, and who has the authority to accept appeal documents, where it goes, we're spelling out where, who has those authority for those types of service of documents.
Anything to add? No?
No, sir.
All right. All right, once again, it's a public hearing. Anybody like to speak in reference to being in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have one.
Commissioner Davis?
What is certiorari?
Uh, it, the short version is, is how you go about appealing a decision to a higher court.
Okay. We just had to make that difficult, huh?
Any other questions?
We have to pay for our law license some reason.
Any other questions? Those in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease, cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. The applicant for ninety-two ninety-eight, Tare Boulevard, has requested that item thirty-one through thirty-eight be continued. Sorry, tabled to for thirty days was their request.
Are all of those Commissioner Davis's?
Yes.
How would you like to proceed, Commissioner Davis? How would you like to proceed, Commissioner Davis?
It was 30. I was under the assumption it was 60. It's 30, they requested 30?
His email to us said the next board meeting, which will be in 30 days.
October 17th.
Well, I'm not sure they're going to be able to make the 30.
They're not going to make it.
They're not going to make 30.
But it's their request.
Their request, yeah.
Yes, I move that we table it for 30 days then, until...
October 17th.
October 17th.
October 17th.
Until October 17th. 31 through 38.
All right, the motion is tabled till October 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item would be item 39.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Turner, Commission members. Angela Rambo, Ms. Planner with the collaborative firm. The next item before you is BOC 2202-0186. This is a request by the Community Creative Community Concepts LLC to rezone 7229 Mount Zion Boulevard in Jonesboro from AG Agriculture to GB General Business for the use of a personal service shop, which would include a nail shop. Property consisting of 1.30 acres, further known as parcel 12078B8001, and located between Spring Place and Mount Zion Circle. There you have your zoning map showing the parcel. Aerial view. Site plan with the proposed building. Elevation. Staff has recommended denial of this rezoning. The proposed rezoning to GB and subsequent needs to amend the future land use map is not in conformity with the 2034 Comprehensive Plan, and also the ZAG has recommended approval.
Are the applicants present?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. My name is Raquel Obumba, and I am a resident of District One in Clayton County, representing Creative Community Concepts. I have been hired by Mr. Hal Tran, who is the owner of this property, to request a rezoning and a future land use map amendment. This property, for context, is right next to the Brewsters on Mount Zion Boulevard. So it's a... Currently, right now, a vacant and condemned house, and he is proposing to make this a single occupant commercial building, but the current zoning, which is agriculture, does not allow for that. And actually, Mr. Tran has also purchased the neighboring property. So he has since closed on that property since the ZAG meeting. That closing was on September 7th. So anything that he develops as property would be right next to a property that he now owns. And as far as agriculture, the current zoning of it, I don't feel... Well, I don't feel as from my personal experience, agriculture is the best and highest zoning for the parcel. And was thinking that there could be a shared interest similar to where that Chevron and the Sherwin-Williams, how you can drive across to and then not create a traffic... Excuse me, create additional traffic, and also having a D cell lane to turn into that property, as well as the hours of operation would not adversely affect any neighbors as well.
And I failed to ask you how many minutes you would like for rebuttal, so I reserve two minutes for you, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
And place five minutes on the clock for anybody who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Ma'am, if you want to use their two minutes, so we can proceed on.
I will say, as far as the rationale for denial from staff, I know we had a presentation earlier, we were about to go into the Comprehensive Plan, so we don't necessarily have a plan to say that it will adversely affect it, which the plan hasn't been completed just yet.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I tell you what I'd like, because we've all spoken some about this project. One thing we have to look at is the number of these type of businesses we have in the area. I know you have one, you discussed closing that one to start another one. There's some other issues I have. You're correct, we don't have a comprehensive plan to go against it, but we don't have a comprehensive plan in favor of, you had it either. What I'd like to do is just table this for 30 days where we can sit and begin to discuss this a little bit further, so that we're all in one accord, and even our staff can begin to look at it as well.
That's right.
Take the podium, please, sir. State your name for us. Are you in agreeance for the tabling of this for 30 days?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, he's a guy to work with. Commissioner, what's your motion?
Yes, I move that we table this for 30 days until... Again, give me that date, is it October?
17.
17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye? Opposed, issue unanimous.
Item number 40 is the same project.
How would you like to proceed?
We'll table that one.
Well, please come back to the podium so we can get it all right. What number is this again?
This would be 40.
40. Are you in agreeance to tabling this as well?
Yes.
Until?
The 17th of October 17th.
All right, your motion?
My motion is to table 2202-0187 until October 17th.
Is there a second?
Second.
I was just going to let the clerk know that 39 is just for decision only, and then 40 is for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Did we get a second on it? Who's second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number 41.
Thank you. So next up, we have BOC Case 2306-0334. This is a request by Austin &amp; Byrd for conditional use permit for mining and mineral extraction located at 5698 Highway 85 in Riverdale. The property consisting of 61.62 acres is in the heavy industrial zoning district, further known as parcel 13215A8A006, and located between Lee's Mill Road and Orr Road. So you see it's HI and surrounded by HI. It's the future land use map. The aerial picture. And that is the proposed extraction area. The proposed shop on the site. Staff has recommended approval of this request, and the ZAG has recommended approval with conditions as well. Just to state the recommended conditions, FRI shall provide a copy of the surface mine land use plan approved by the Georgia EPD, as well as any permits amendments made to Clayton County. FRI shall add the county fire and police to its pre-blast notification. FRI's customers' trucks should not be allowed to access the subject property from Highway 85 to transport rock from the subject property. FRI should limit blasting on the subject property to the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., presently used for blasting at its current pit at the Forest Park Quarry, and no weekend blasting or blasting on holidays will occur. And FRI shall limit the number of blast events on the subject property to no more than 30 in a 12-month period. Thank you.
Are the applicants here?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. Please state your name for us, and if you would like to save any minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman. My name's Clay Massey. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. I'd like to save a minute for rebuttal. Please, thank you.
Please proceed.
So the Forest Park Quarry has been in Clayton County, its current location, since the 1950s. It's a granite quarry. It's one of only two granite quarries in the county, and it's an essential source of crushed granite for the county. And, you know, as seen here, it supplies crushed granite for the airport, for transportation projects, for highways, interstates, building, and important development projects for the economic development, transportation development of the county, as well as other, obviously, private consumers. So it's very important to the county. It's been around for a long time. I'm having a little trouble. There we go. So the location of the quarry, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, shows how proximate it is to the other existing quarry in the county, but also transportation infrastructure in the airport. Of course, you know, important consumers or needs of crushed granite, but also the transportation proximity to the quarry allows it to be transported to the locations within the area at an economic cost. We are asking to mine the property that's immediately adjacent to the west of the existing quarry. We need to expand the quarry because we are running out of quality rock in the current pit. In order to extend the life of the quarry, we need to begin mining in the adjacent area. The other option is to move to the north. If we move to the north, then we have to move the processing plant to the subject property, and I'll just move forward.
Will you explain what north is?
Certainly, Commissioner. It's... So north, and it's... Here's the current pit, and so north is just this area here, but our processing plant is there. And so if we move to the north, then that means we need to move the processing plant to the subject property.
Please go back.
And the processing plant is more visible. It's... I'll show you a photo.
No, I just didn't want anybody to think you were talking about north location-wise, like north of Atlanta.
Outside of Clayton County.
Right, exactly.
Thank you for asking that clarifying question. It's north of the pit, the existing pit. And so if we had to move north, then we would have to move the processing plant, which this is a picture of, we would need to move that to the subject property. We would... That is going to have much more visibility than a surface mine, which is below ground. And so we're asking to mine the subject property as opposed to move the processing plant there. So our operations are permitted and heavily regulated by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. We operate under a surface mining permit. The expansion is the equivalent of only 13% of additional mining space compared to what we currently operate, so it's not a tremendous expansion of the total operation. The site plan quickly has some features that I just wanted to point out. It's got a 100-foot setback all around the property, which is twice the amount of setback required by heavy industrial zoning. We also have a berm to the north and to the south, again, to, you know, obstruct views and to provide any necessary protection to any sort of adjacent properties. The Highway 85 access, this is important, we would not use the Highway 85 access for customers who are picking up stone. That would be an employee or a contractor, some sort of services entrance and exit. It would not... You would not see trucks leaving with crushed stone and using Highway 85 for an entry or exit. Blasting is heavily regulated. It is regulated under the Blasting Standards Act by the Farm Marshal's Office. It's very strict. We have monitoring requirements, reporting requirements. There are sound and vibration limitations that are monitored constantly. Importantly, each blast is half a second, so we are going to limit per the conditions to 30 blasts a year. That's the equivalent of 15 seconds a blast a year. And the other conditions were stated earlier. I don't need to restate them, but of course, we're more than happy to abide by that. So that's our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Mr. Fleming from Vulcan is here also. He can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber. Come forward, please.
Mickey Garber, Incorporated Rex, Georgia, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The appeal of Clayton County is that we have a myriad of different aspects in the culture of raising money and businesses. We're not primarily a shopping area. We're not primarily a construction area. We are not primarily a housing area. We have appeal to all different aspects of industry and livelihoods. And mining just happens to be one of them that we're gifted with. And that area over there has been a mining area for aggregate. Aggregate that goes in all parts of cement and building, whether you're building a one-story building or a 100-story building, that aggregate has to go into it. Now, if you were to close that, the next closest place for Vulcan Materials is Stockbridge, but you have it in Clayton County, and you're receiving taxes and money for that. Why drive it to another county? The only thing that I would ask the gentlemen is the areas owned by Vulcan Materials, and are the prices per ton the same at Lee's Mill as it is in Stockbridge? And I hope they would say yes. And if they do say yes, I say, Lee, permit them to continue mining in that area. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Sir, you save one minute if you'd like to utilize it.
Thank you, Chairman. To answer his question, the prices are comparable. I mean, I don't know if they're exactly the same, but they're basically the equivalent. So, but nothing further. Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners.
Commissioner Hammer.
Well, I do have a question regarding contact person and all. If we have that, or if you have that?
It'll be Mr. Fleming. I'm happy to provide his contact information.
I have it.
Can you mail it to you? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and I've visited the site and all too, so yes, I have that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I didn't know if you all had someone else, or...
Hey, it's Mr. Fleming.
It's him, okay. That's him, okay. Okay. Well, hearing all, I recommend approval for BOC 2306-0334.
With the conditions?
With, yes, definitely, with the five conditions. Thank you.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple of questions. What is the current life expectancy of the current? The anticipated life expectancy left on that?
Commissioner Jimmy Fleming with Vulcan.
Commissioner Jimmy Fleming with Vulcan Materials. Certainly with this, this would help prolong the life, but we probably have enough stone in the old pit to continue mining for thirty or forty more years. It's just not the same...it's not as good a quality as the material that would be on this particular site.
And then, the new anticipated one, what's the life...what would be the life expectancy of that?
It would be...if you were just to mine on that particular site, it would probably have enough material there for thirty years under current marketing conditions.
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Your site over there, I've visited. You all have a site in Decatur, La Tonia, is that...
Yes, ma'am, La Tonia.
I've visited that site. I was going to ask you also, do you all allow for the kids to do field trips like you do at the one at La Tonia as well?
Yeah, we've got setback a little bit by COVID, but at the height of it, we were touring about twenty thousand kids a year, so through all of our sites.
I'd like to definitely come out there and visit. Yeah.
Any other questions?
And ride the big trucks.
And ride the big trucks.
I want to go down in the hole.
I'd like to make it clear, we do not let Commissioners drive the trucks.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
That's okay, we're going to have a picnic and have a good time. I got you.
All right, those in favor, I. Opposed, it's unanimous.
For the next item, we have Ryan Sellers, who is a consultant with TCF, the collaborative firm, and he has been with accounting for over a year. And so, he'll take over.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Sellers, planning and owning consultant with the collaborative firm. The next case is BOC twenty-three oh five dash zero three zero nine. A request by Civil Consulting Engineers Incorporated to amend the future land use map category for four seventy Flint River Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three eight, for mixed use to general commercial, for a convenience store with gasoline sales. Said property consisting of, give or take, two-point-three-four-three acres, as further known as parcel zero-five-two-four-three-eight, A zero-zero-two, and located at the intersection of Flint River Road and Roberts Road. Here's the future land use map, the current zoning, an aerial map, the site plan, building elevations. Staff recommendation is denial. The proposed rezoning to GB and subsequent needs to amend the future land use category is not in conformity with the 2034 comprehensive plan. The ZAG recommendation is also denial.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward.
So, this is actually in District Three?
That's where I'm going to get at. Yes, sir. I'm clear.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm John Azar. I represent the applicant.
And before you start, Mr. Azar, I believe we passed a resolution or an agreement that it's District Commissioner is not present, that we would ask for it to be held.
Let me...
Go ahead.
The Commissioner of District Three did give me a call, asking me to represent her.
Okay.
And I won't go any further, but...
Disregard, please. Please proceed, sir. How many minutes would you like to save on rebuttal?
You want me to make a presentation first?
Yeah, yeah, no, no. How many minutes, in case somebody was in opposition to your request?
A minute. I'm tired from washing all this stuff.
Set a time for not being you both.
So, I don't want to keep you all...I'll be real brief.
So, please proceed on, sir.
This property, the subject property, is two-point-three acres. It's on the southwest corner of Roberts and Flint River Road. It's in an area that's surrounded with automotive repair shops and small warehouses. It's zoned, presently zoned multifamily. If this property is developed multifamily, it's going to put a strain on the police department. It's going to put a strain on the school system, and it's going to create more traffic. What we're proposing is an elaborate convenience store with pumps, with a workstation, and an outside patio with Wi-Fi. And you ask me why we're going to do a workstation? I had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Warner. She says that she wanted something other than a convenience store... I'm sorry.
Commissioner Franklin?
Franklin. Other than what you see in a quick trip or a racetrack, and she said she would like to see a workstation with Wi-Fi. I thought that was a great idea. Talked to the developer. He agreed, and we'll make that a condition of the rezoning.
All right. Is that it for your presentation?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I know you want a longer one, but that's it.
This is a public hearing. Anyone here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Would you like to use one minute?
No, I'm fine.
No, okay. Commissioner Hambrich?
Okay, according to the request of District Three Commissioner Franklin, she recommended approval for BOC twenty-three oh five oh three oh nine.
Is there a second? Is there a second on it?
I second it.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, I. Opposed, nay. It's three-one that passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let them go first, and then he'll come back up.
This is a companion case to the one we just heard. This is BOC twenty-three oh four dash zero three zero one. A request by Civil Consulting Engineers Incorporated to rezone four seventy Flint River Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three eight, from RM multifamily residential to GB general business, for a convenience store with gasoline sales. Said property consisting of, give or take, two-point-three-four-three acres, as further known as parcel zero-five-two-four-three-eight, A zero-zero-two, and located at the intersection of Flint River Road and Roberts Road. Here's the current zoning, the future land use map, an aerial map, the proposed site plan, elevations. Staff recommendation is denial. The proposed rezoning to GB and subsequent needs to amend the future land use category is not in conformity with the 2034 plan, and the ZAG recommendation is also denial.
Yes, sir, Mr. Azar. Would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal?
I thought we were doing all three at the same time.
No, we've got to take them individually for the public hearing.
I don't have anything else to say, other than what I said to start with.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anybody in opposition? Commissioner Hambrich.
Okay, per Commissioner District Three, Commissioner Franklin, I recommend approval of BOC twenty-three oh four oh three oh one.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Let me sit back down. Is that it?
Definitely.
Unless you have another one. He does have one, huh?
He does? That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
There's one more?
Yeah, I don't see it on there.
Our next item is item number forty-four.
So, item number forty-four is actually BOC dash twenty-three zero four dash zero three zero two, which is a conditional use permit for a convenience store with gasoline sales at four seventy Flint River Road. And two things. First of all, I made a copy and paste typo with this one. And the second thing is, we want to show the revised elevations that was just provided last night. So, we'll show that after Mr. Ryan goes through this case.
So, this is the final...this is the final companion case. This is BOC twenty-three oh four dash zero three zero two. A request by Civil Consulting Engineers Incorporated for a condition use permit for a convenience store with gasoline sales at four seventy Flint River Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three oh two three eight. Said property consisting of, give or take, two-point-three-four acres, as further known as parcel zero-five-two-four-three-eight, A zero-zero-two, and located at the intersection of Flint River Road and Roberts Road. Here's the current zoning, the future land use map, the aerial map, the proposed site plan, building elevations. So, this is the landscape plan. This is the rezoning plan. These are the new elevations that were presented.
Is that it?
Staff's recommendation is denial. There is evidence that the proposed conditional use permit to develop a C-store with gasoline sales will adversely affect the usability of adjacent properties. The proposed rezoning in GB and subsequent needs to amend the future land use category is not in conformity with the 2034 comprehensive plan, and the ZAG recommendation is also denial.
All right, it's a public hearing. Anyone want to like to speak in favor of? Ah, he said he didn't have anything. You have something further, sir?
I just want to say one thing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The jointing property is owned by the Clayton County Water Department. They must have sixty, seventy, eighty acres over there, so it's not...this store is not going to affect anything that they do.
Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Commissioner Hambrich?
Again, with the approval of Commissioner District Three, Commissioner Franklin, I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
We have one more item, item number forty-five. This is actually a Board of Commissioners-initiated text amendment for BOC twenty-three zero four dash zero three zero three.
And unfortunately, this was another copy and paste typo. Do pause this for that. This is a request by the Board of Commissioners to modify the text of the Ellenwood Plant Unit Development to preserve and protect the Ellenwood PUD as designed, including permitted uses and development standards. The boundary includes portions of landlots two fifteen, two thirty-four, two thirty-five, two thirty-six, two forty-five, two forty-six, two forty-seven of the twelfth district. In revising the conditions, we were adding condition number five, changes to the Ellenwood PUD errors only being initiated by the Board of Commissioners. Staff recommends approval, so did the ZAG.
All right, this is a request by the Board of Commissioners. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board, with a total time of twenty minutes for comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
And we will pick up where we left off of the list from last meeting, starting off with Mr. Rodriguez Scott. Rodriguez Scott. Rosalyn Scounders. Mickey Garber. We know he here.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, well, Ms. Hambrich and Mr. Davis, two are absent. I wish you would convey my message to the absentees. What I'd like to say is that we have lost a great thing in Clayton County, and I'm alluding to the loss of Ms. Kemp, the reporter of the Clayton Crescent, who brought information to the public, whether it bode positively or negatively on any one of us. We have lost a great thing in Clayton County as bringing the free press, as losing the free press in Clayton County. And with y'all handing out money left and right, in addition to money already handed out tonight that I heard you do, that no contribution was made to save our paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Matten. Wayne Matten. Chelsea Shelton. Chelsea Shelton. Jody Chambers. Chris Gallagher. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson. Lisa Love. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment. Mr. Reed?
I wish I could say there was no executive session, but it wouldn't be a meeting if we didn't have one. Litigation and personnel.
So, motion going to executive session for litigation and personnel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Please have a good and safe night, everyone. Madam Clerk, you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to reconvene. I'll second those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
All right. You want me to take them both together?
Yes, please.
Okay. First is in the matter of Clayton County versus Autozone. It's just a condemnation matter, and this is to resolve that litigation for the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred dollars to purchase the entire parcel owned by Autozone, located at sixty-seven oh two Mount Zion Boulevard, and this will come following a final consent order, and this is a condemnation matter again. And then, the second is a resolution of the case of Latandra McDaniel, Lantandra, and Darryl Lloyd versus Clayton County at all. And this is to resolve that matter, which arose out of an accident that occurred on Interstate seventy-five north near Jonesboro Road tomorrow, Georgia, on or about May nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and that amount is seven-hundred thousand dollars, and that is to discharge the county and all their named defendants in that matter.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on either item? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have something else?
No.
That's why he's looking like he was about to put something else on him. All right, is there a second? Who made the motion? Commissioner Davis made the motion. Commissioner Hambrick seconded the motion. Are there any questions here? None. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Have a good night.